This conference will now be recorded.
Good thing it reminded me I was muted. So we did put together a presentation regarding that. Maybe it will work. Maybe it won't. All right, so the goal of this workshop was to explain the city's affordable housing in lieu funds, explain what affordable housing can mean, and review different types of senior housing, and then obtain feedback from the community on what is desired in future senior housing projects. So affordable housing in lieu funds is derived from our municipal code 17.50 Affordable Housing. That outlines the purpose of providing affordable housing in Escolon consistent with state law and the city's general plan. In that section, it identifies all developers engaging in a residential project shall be required to provide affordable housing. They need to provide affordable housing or dedicate land for affordable housing or pay in lieu fees. I'm sorry, change this up. Identify procedures for provision and standards of the affordable housing needed. So there's a formula when a developer comes based on what their project size is, how much they have to contribute to each of that. We weren't going to go into that part of it tonight. Typically, the most common question that we get is the funds that the city has collected, how can they be spent? And that is clearly defined in our municipal code, which states that money deposited into housing trust funds, including any accrued interest thereon, shall be expended exclusively for the development of new or substantially rehabilitated dwellings that are available at affordable housing costs or an affordable rent to households of very low, lower, and moderate income and that are subject to the deed restriction requirements set forth in the Escolon Municipal Code 17.50.070. So some examples of how the city could consider using these funds would be to subsidize the construction of new or rehabilitated dwelling units, so long as the end result is the production of restricted affordable units. Help pay for the land required for a project, again, so long as the end result is the production of restricted affordable units. Or we could use these funds as matching funds for a tax credit affordable housing project. So I'll let Dominique take over from here with the definition of what affordable means.
Thank you, Jenny. So I know we discussed this a lot, it's come up a lot, especially in the last few meetings, because I know we have members in the community that want affordable housing, and they don't necessarily mean affordable. When you say affordable to government, we're thinking state-regulated affordable, which the state has put in rules and regulations on what's considered affordable. And so per HCD, affordable housing means that both income limits and rent and housing costs are set as a maximum in order to be eligible to live there. So this housing is then deed restricted accordingly for a minimum of 50 years. So this means that if you exceed the set income limitations, you're not eligible for that affordable housing. Affordable senior housing is a priority in the city of Escolon. We've been talking about it a lot these last few months, but not necessarily affordable as the state defines it. We've had an expressed interest, we discussed that also repeatedly, that we want to be able to keep our senior population in the city regardless of their income level. So the city is seeking affordable senior housing, less than market rate. The seniors have housing available in town that meets their needs and doesn't use up the bulk of their fixed income. So this has income and rent limits. They base them on surveys of local area median income, or AMI. So for San Joaquin County, our median income is $75,000. And so you see on the number of persons in a household, it has columns for extremely low, very low, low, median, and moderate. So if you're, you know, a one or two-person household and you're making over $52,000 a year in income, you're in that median threshold, which would possibly disqualify you from moving into affordable housing, even though your rent is, or your income isn't that high. So... So I have an example scenario. About a month ago, we looked into what the market rate was for a one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment, and it's currently around $1,100. That could be on the lower end or the higher end, depending on whether it's new, older units, those type of things. So a one-person household that has an income of $26,250, which is considered very low income, would get $2,187 a month total, which would then, minus that rent, would leave about $1,875 for all other expenses. So you're thinking other expenses. We know there's a lot of healthcare costs, we know there's utilities, we know there's groceries. Depending on how active the seniors are, they might have, you know, gas expenses as well. HCD sets rent limit at 30% of income. Some cities go further, or counties go further, or maybe 233, it just depends. So maximum rent would then be set at $656.25. So if the rent's $1,100, but the rent is limited by HCD to $656, there's a $443.75 balance that remains. So that money right there, the difference between the market rate and the limitation on rent, in order to do an affordable senior project, that would need to be subsidized. There's somebody, something, someone needs to come in, whether it's an agency, investor, 501(c)(3), and cover that payment for each unit. And that's typically where you would see the county housing authority coming in, and that's why you have housing authorities slash Section 8. They come in, they pay that remainder of the rent to make the owner of the project, the property owner or developer, a pool for $1,100, give him the full $1,100. So if there's no funding source to cover that remaining balance, it typically will make an affordable housing project financially infeasible. Therefore, the owner or investor counts on collecting that market rate rent. And so in the past, we've had people or developers and investors interested in moving forward with senior housing, and that's kind of where our hiccup always hit, with the limit on sites of land that we have currently in town that we're able to build on, maybe through the increase in construction costs, the increase in the market rate, from what it is right now and continuing to rise, not only in San Joaquin County, but California-wide. It doesn't make any project pencil, both senior and/or multifamily housing at this point. So then, wanted to review just types of senior housing, because this would go into play with whatever our seniors in the community are looking for or think that our city should be housing or looking towards obtaining as a goal. We have aging in place, which is typically when they live on their own or with family. Independent living, which includes retirement communities, retirement homes, senior housing, and/or senior apartments. Residential care homes, which are typically small facilities that offer personalized service to small groups of adults. If you have less people, you can actually run a residential care home out of your home. We are not aware of any of them being in Escolon. And then if it's learned in that, you have to have a zone for that use. The state has mandated that that six or less can be done in residential. There's also continuing care retirement community, or CCRC, which is part independent living, part assisted living, and part skilled nursing facility. There's assisted living community, which are small apartments or rooms in a care community. And then there's a nursing home or skilled nursing facility, which offers 24-hour supervised care with meals, activities, and health advantage then.
Pardon me, where would Heritage House fit?
So I was just going to, we have some examples of that, yeah. So we're figuring to be good to look at what Escolon already has in our city, and what we're experiencing with, what we know is available, or at least in town for now. So we have Heritage House, which is an independent living facility. It's affordable, which means deed restricted, you have to meet the income requirement. Age 62-plus adult community. It has 12 studios and 31-bedroom apartments. Several of the apartments are equipped to accommodate those who are mobility impaired, and available to those over the age of 18. Amenities that this facility has, onsite laundry room, individual mailboxes, ample parking, community room. And they also have onsite management staff and onsite maintenance staff to take care of any issues that may take place on the property. So then the next one we have is Addit Mobile Network, which is also a dependent living. This is a mobile home park community for seniors 55 and up. There are 105 units. All of the units are owner-occupied, we do not have rentals. The amenities include a clubhouse, recreational room, individual mailboxes, covered parking, also onsite management staff. And then the last one we have is Golden Acres Home and Care, which is considered an assisted living facility. This living facility has 26 beds. The occupancy is not age-restricted, but based on level of care needed. However, the majority of the residents do happen to be above 60 years old. These amenities for this facility include the outdoor landscape, common areas, a patio, onsite activities, a large dining area, and TV show. So when we're looking at senior housing and discussing what we see in the future coming into Escolon, and how we keep our seniors in town and not having to go to outside places to live, we want to look at the amenities, what you want this facility to have, whether it be laundry room, a community room, a pool, etc., exercise classes, those type of things. We want to look at the neighborhood, and these are just suggestions. There could be more items, there could be less. It just depends on what is focused in our community. Neighborhood, convenient access to things, both in walking and driving, whether it fits into the neighborhood that it's surrounding, that it's safe. Obviously, we don't want to build senior housing facilities somewhere that's industrial. We've got can rations and things going on. We want to put it in an area where it fits in, and it's also safe for that community. Facility access, the pedestrian and vehicle circulation, whether or not we're okay with it being a two-story or three-story. We want elevators, we want stairs. Those are things to take into consideration. Private units or spaces, setting maybe a minimum size or maximum size for square footage requirements, giving people enough space. And then other things that help with aging in place, you know, whether it's wide hallways, additional room if that person happens to be in a wheelchair or has to use additional space for a walker or cane. Common areas, which include dining areas, computer rooms, a kitchen that's available to everybody, and maybe they're able to rent it and use it for some type of party or get together. Whether you want laundry facilities in each unit, or if you want a community laundry facility that everybody shares. Operations and management, this came up in the last project that we kind of took a look at. It was much smaller, and so it wasn't proposing operations and management, but it did come up that senior housing should have some type of site administrator or property manager, whether it's through an HOA or some type of group that is able to control what's going on and take care of people that are located in that project. And then we have features to support aging in place, which is, you know, accommodations throughout all of the rooms to work around canes, walkers, wheelchairs, whether you have grab bars with a roll-in shower, security services, emergency call services. If you're looking to fall and are able to contact somebody from the room. And then building design, how do we want it to look? How do we want rooms to look? All of this comes into play. We actually did recently approve a contract with J.B. Anderson, an associate, and we are going to be moving forward with design guidelines for both multifamily housing and senior housing. That will be moving forward in the next few months. We do have John and David with J.B. Anderson in the audience. If you have any specific questions. But we do look forward to having workshops and again utilizing this information as well to be able to put towards our design guidelines for moving forward with this type of project. And then we talk about partnerships. The city doesn't build housing, and so that's where the concern comes in, is finding a developer, or an investor, or other agencies to put together some type of partnership, where we negotiate and talk about what the city wants, what the city needs, and work with that developer and/or any agencies involved to obtain that project. And I know Tammy spoke earlier about ways to utilize that type of funding that we have, that we've been pressing for in lieu fees, but then there's also main items that these partnerships look for, you know, having the land available. We recently did have a meeting with RHS, who is the owner of Heritage House, and it was a very successful meeting where they advised us that we didn't have enough experience and have a lot of projects, where they see that they could build a project or are interested in building a project, maybe 50 or 60 units, where they can average out affordable housing in terms of state affordable, where they'd be able to apply to the state of California, try to obtain tax credits and loans that are forgivable and be restricted properties for at least 40 years. Those type of incentives that the state and federal government are offering, but also provide, you know, a little bit market rate as well. So there would be some units that would be at market rates, and there'd also be certain of those units that we could put somewhere in between. And when you have all three of those types of income levels together, it works out really, really well, to be able to obtain those funding through the state and government, and also be able to provide that these houses help with how much it costs to keep these ones available. So I think that was all that I had on the presentation. And I don't know if anybody in the council wants to speak first, or if anyone wants to make any comments?
No, again, I have a question from the council, and then if you guys have any questions that we can answer, then we'll do that first.
Okay, well, let's start with Councilman Bellinger.
Just looking at acres around town and whatnot, how acres does the current Heritage House take up of land? Do you ever think we have an idea?
You know, I've been asked that before, I don't know if I have to look at it.
Does Luca?
We're assuming it's right around in the 3 to 4 acres. Yeah, I think it's under four. They have about 42 units, I believe. I can look that up really quick if you'd like.
Okay, so to get the best situation that you just expressed with the different levels and whatnot, is there a certain acreage size that we would possibly need to facilitate that development?
So I mean, it's kind of...
Anyhow, situation anyways.
Yeah, and that really depends on what the community and what the council's planning missions are looking for. I mean, if we want senior housing, in most case scenarios, you're going to want to build single-family or in single-story, unless you want to do an elevator, where they do have ways that you could do like the half stair where they don't go up in height. But if you're looking at probably less than 50 units, 50 or less units, because that's the number we've had run around, 30, 40. It's kind of getting a little larger, and that's fine. Probably two to three acres. And so at this point, the only property in town that's that large is the auction yard property.
You have auction yard? And then, how many people are on the waitlist at Heritage House? I know it's a like a four-year waitlist. Do you have any idea of the magnitude of that list? It's a four-year list, but how big is that list? How many people are on waitlist?
140, that's what they're...
So we're talking 140 individual renters right now that are on waitlist?
Correct, 140 that are on the waitlist. Yeah, Heritage House is four to five years. They typically might stay five years and surprise everybody if there's an opening. But they did say that because of the type of housing, I mean typically people who move in there don't need...
Right.
So the turnaround for units becoming available is much, is much less than a regular apartment complex.
So is that going to be more than what we currently have at Heritage House time?
Yeah, I mean, and that's something we could look into.
I mean, it doesn't have to be one project. We work closely on it, and then we have another one in a few years.
Right, exactly, we need to address more of this one project problem. We need that really, really, if that list is going to be able to get bigger.
It will, yeah. I think they cap it at 140.
Okay.
Councilman Swift?
Well, I was going to say, I think you have a quick question up there. I just want to get it.
But all I know, according to the survey, how many of those people did I ask, Juan?
No, I didn't ask that.
That's a good point. That was my question.
Yeah, I can find out and report back.
Well, let me ask you this. Is Heritage House, anyone can move in from anywhere?
I believe so, as long as...
So ask the homeowners, have no priority?
And that would be because, I mean, well, I don't want to make assumptions, so maybe I shouldn't say that.
Well, we find out, but it seems to me a priority to senior housing. I'd like to have our people be the priority. And what's the point of facilitating income reasonable living for other outside areas when we can't take care of our own people?
I think it depends upon where the subsidy comes from.
So it is possible to question?
Yeah, because if it's coming from a housing authority, the housing authority is the one that's supplementing the income, and they may tell you you can't restrict...
Well, that's one thing we have to look at, picking somebody to do it.
Countywide, and they have...
Yeah, go ahead, Danny.
Well, I have a question. Is housing urban development, the federal government involved in Heritage House originally, so funded?
Yes, I believe they are involved in Heritage House, right? That's originally where their funding came from.
So if they're involved with the funding, anybody could get on the waitlist?
And I don't believe it's not, yeah, I don't believe it is just Escolon. I believe it is countywide.
That's wrong.
Countywide or statewide? I mean, what's going to prevent anybody from applying?
Yeah, yes.
And that's what we should look at and try to figure out, if we can somehow find a mechanism to get the Escolon priority. I mean, the whole point of this is for our people in this town. I mean, I don't want to build housing for other people. Councilman Swift, you got any more?
No, I was going to say, I'd be interested here with the gentleman, Johnny Anderson.
J.B. Anderson.
J.B. Anderson. I'd love to hear what they have to say. And actually, in terms of their business model, about how close can you get to offering a preferential renting situation to Escolon? I know there's limitations, but...
They might have some knowledge on that area. They're more the planner side, they have with development and stuff like that.
Do they have any knowledge in that area?
So, members of the council, Johnny Anderson, J.B. Anderson, why is it planning? So this is a very unique situation, obviously, wanting to spend local dollars promoting housing, senior housing for your residents in this community. You have a tool, you have an affordable housing fee that you're collecting now. You have authority to spend those dollars as you feel appropriate based on your ordinance notes. They're a good source. But the truth is that once you go to state and federal funding, then your ability to restrict those funds for use of individuals, if it's pretty much open, has to be by law. There are a number of different types of senior housing that can be promoted in this community. Heritage House is one example. It may not fit everybody's needs, and I think that's an important part of tonight's discussion, to hear what the folks in this community believe they need, is a Heritage Home-type facility or something else. You know, there's other projects in and around the area. O'Connor Woods, if you guys are familiar with that, up in Stockton. It's kind of a gated project, but it's got opportunities for independent living. But in addition to that, it's got apartments, and in addition to that, it's got rehab center, ambulatory care. There's various opportunities there. And quite often, it's a marriage between the local jurisdiction and the nonprofit organization, whether it's Catholic, the Catholic Church is an example, or similar to what Griffin has about in his home. So it is a partnership, as Dominique presented. And my understanding is the purpose behind this workshop is to kind of hear what the community is saying and what their plea, their needs are. What's important here is, Dominique said this, you guys aren't building in the project. You won't build it. So what you're trying to do is put together a list of criteria that meets the community's goals and that can be used to attempt to market that type of project to a developer or series of developers that might come into town to meet those goals and objectives. And it's becoming, the economy right now is at a point where it's extremely robust, even with COVID. Lumber prices, I don't know if you guys are aware where lumber prices are right now. They're only 300% higher than they should be, in a lot of people's eyes. So that all contributes towards affordability of the project, if you want to move forward. So it is a partnership. And frankly, getting a quality builder in town that can help you with something like this is paramount. And it may, you know, there are local developers here that have done that in other areas, Oakdale, Rupp, Bank, and Griffin, and other areas. But again, you have to set what those expectations are through this process, and that's extremely important. That will help Dominique and Jamie convey to the folks, you know, if they're coming to the counter, as to what their expectations are. It's extremely important. And I'll be here to listen, and obviously add some additional comments if I can, if you allow me to do that.
No, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now we're done?
Yep, that's how I just like waited for the input, so.
Okay, I want to hear from the council. Are you, like, mayor?
Yeah, I think Dominique can frame the discussion tonight. What are the needs? We need to know what the community needs, what they want. And then we can move on to what are we going to build, how do we fund it, who's involved? So I would like to get that feedback, or what the community thinks the current needs are, or what you think we're going to need in the future. You know, we have examples like that. I mean, we have Dale Commons. If you have all these areas around us, all these facilities around us, so we want to see what would be a good sit here in Escolon and would meet the needs of our community. So, say, we're going to...
Okay.
So I would like to allow Ann Shadix, our pointy on the condition of aging, she did put together a small paper for you guys that she would like to share. We can allow her to talk first.
Okay, I'd like to say something before she starts.
Oh, okay.
That's all right, I'd like to get my questions in. Ann, before you start, what I understand to be the main concern amongst the locals, from what I've heard and been told, is the majority of seniors that are moving out of our community is because they cannot find, they can't find affordable living in this community. That's what I've been told by numerous people. And they don't want to buy a house. It's been suggested maybe they buy another home at a lesser rate. That's not their wish that I've heard from these people. What I've been told is they're hoping to find a place they can rent that's affordable in the town so they can stay in the community. That's kind of where this all started, where it's at. So if you want to identify the thing, I think it's affordability, and that's going to be, in my opinion, the top of the line of what people are concerned with. I mean, we can wish and hope for what we want, but if they can't afford it, it's not going to do anybody any good. So in my mind, based on what I've been told, the most important thing is affordable. So, Ann, with that, go ahead.
Thank you, Ed. And you're, you're absolutely saying some of the things that I want to underscore for you. One of the, is the important thing to bring up is that there's different types of housing. And we're, we have the low-income housing, which is like the Heritage House. And we don't want to take away from that. There will always be a need in the community for low-income housing. However, there's another group of us. So if low-income housing is up to forty-two thousand...
Ann, can you talk into the microphone because there are people online too, so they won't be able to hear you.
Okay, so, so say forty-two thousand is low income. That's the heritage type of setting. We are asking for plus, up, dollars up, up to fifty thousand. Because what's happening is we have people here that are selling their homes and helping move to Modesto because there's no place here for them. I went to Oakdale because, you know, you're on waiting lists forever. And I got turned down by two facilities. You know, if you make just enough to become comfortable, you make too much. So I then started talking to seniors and said, what do we need? All of them, all of them that I've talked to were in the same category. They want, they want a rental, but it should be a rental type. It should be designed so it's a home for them. Because for many of them, that's the last place their women go, and we want them to be happy. So I am talking about people that are sixty years plus, which falls into the senior category. I'm talking about the people just above the low income and, but with up to whatever, um, salary or whatever income level, it can be fifty, that it is our hope that it's fifty plus. What this, what the people want is a rental. They want one bedroom. Some want two bedrooms. I put studio in there because some people just kind of fall in between. They want so badly to be in the environment that they don't have quite enough, so I put studio in there. I gave you some idea of floor and, and, uh, square feet. But what is a big thing for them is being together as a unit. And they want meals. They want a place that serves meals so that they can come together, they have camaraderie. And they're also, they're not looking for laundry rooms. No, thank you. They want with a stackable washer and dryer in our place because that's our home. And that's what we're looking for. We're also looking for places, a place that has a community room with kitchen so that people can come together and eat, but they can also plan a special event, a special meal. Families can come in to room with families. And I put a lot of detail there for you, but I wanted you to get an idea of the type of things that we were looking for. We, we feel strongly about having a security system. We feel strongly about having housekeeping services included in the rent. And you know what? That housekeeping is a protection for the owner as well as a convenience for the person. And I, when I went to, I, I went and looked at facilities in Oakdale, Modesto, Houston, and Ribbon. And then I went to Samaritan Building. They told me that they have to go once a month and check the apartments because seniors use their ovens for storage. And so they have to lock somebody together. So to have housekeepers come in is a protection for the owner as well because they can kind of... Once a week, there's a fee for housekeepers to come in to change beds and so forth. Activities, there's, uh, obviously, when they have activities. A pool didn't seem to be a big thing for them, but an exercise room is definitely an important thing for them to, to have. And I, I did mention security. They, you know, there's, there's different security systems, but basically the kind that they, they can push it down or push it down if something just may fall or, or that the, uh, manager calls once a day if they have to come down to meals to make sure that they're okay. I tried to, yeah, do enough information so that people get a feel for, for what it's like. If we had our, if we had, uh, our wish, it would be put to the community center. And the reason for that is we would hope that there would be activities at the community center that we could walk to and participate in. And they can also participate in meals that happen there as well. So, and we always, always want it located where there's a safe walking area because we want to keep our seniors active and we want to have an area for them to get up and walk. So my plea to you is to keep, keep moving on this senior housing if badly, badly needed in Escalon. But broaden your scope to include those that are in a little bit of a higher category. So I hope this was helpful, and if you have any questions.
I have one for you, Ann. What do you think, uh, the rent range here? What are these type of seniors going to be able to afford on a monthly basis?
That's a very good question. I, whatever I tell you, I probably will have people back to...
Well, let's start with what you think and we'll find out what's real.
I think one bedroom, including meals seventeen hundred.
I beg your pardon? Including meals?
One bedroom.
Okay, let's just, let's go with the idea right now. We're just talking about a rental and no services. Let's start with that. So what do you think of one bedrooms worth, or what do you think's affordable for the seniors that you're, uh, dealing with?
What do you think it's worth?
Yeah.
That's what I said. I think...
But Ann, I'm not talking about the service that accompanies the unit. I'm referring just to the unit itself. If you were to get a rental and it was, uh, one of these sizes you're interested in, what do you think the rent range would be? Without the service and all the other stuff we're talking about?
If we had everything on that list?
No, but we're not. We're talking about, right now, we're talking about a rental. A rental that would still...
I'm totally talking, I'm not...
I understand, I understand. But Ann, I want to get away from the idea of all these amenities you brought up. Let's talk basics right now. How much do you think a one-bedroom rental should go for, for the seniors?
If it didn't have...
That's what I said, yes.
Okay, seniors.
What's the range or not what's the range?
No, we just want, want to get some parameters.
Trying to get like what the range is.
Exactly.
Eight hundred to a thousand.
And I think that's not unfair. I think that's not unfair. Okay, eight hundred to a thousand sounds reasonable, actually. Now, if you added the amenities, obviously, it's not going to be eight hundred to a thousand. I don't know what they're going to be because I'm not in the business of, uh, facilitating those types of services. We'd have to do some research on it. There are, what's that place in Mantic, uh, Commons or whatever it's called?
Dale Commons.
Now, do they have facility there that would be affordable renting? Do you know what their units go for?
They're not affordable.
Okay, so that's out.
So Dale Commons is the one in Modesto though?
Dale Commons, okay.
It's in Houston as well, but, but it, it also has the memory clinic. I think they have skilled nursing, of course.
Right.
They have everything together. So what, what we found, or what I found when I traveled around, is the, it's the meals that kick up the price.
Oh, absolutely. And the housekeeping and all those amenities are going to add.
Housekeeping, you know, you're not talking about that much, but the meals do pick it up. But still, if, if you don't have to just spend three hundred, four hundred dollars a month spending groceries or whatever people spend, then you've got your meals.
Well, we're talking a whole different thing here. When we're, when initially I was talking about affordable housing, I was referring to units that would be rented at affordable cost. This other stuff you've now added is a different ballgame altogether. It's not affordable renting. It could be affordable, but it's going to be a different ballgame. We'd have to find someone who would be able to, uh, facilitate these types of things. I don't know anybody off the top of my head. Uh, councilmembers, anybody?
I, I think we're trying to capture what, what Ann is talking about, is that group that's not so low-income.
Right.
That they qualify for Heritage House. There's that middle range. You're not so affluent that you could pay three thousand dollars a month or five thousand dollars a month and go to a Dale Commons or something like that. You're looking for something that is in that fixed income, comfortable living, and that's, uh, and, and I think that's the right approach. That's the, the missing piece that we need in town here. So I think rent-wise, you know, it's a, it's a reasonable rent, maybe a little bit lower than market, but targeted to the sixty-plus age group. And I think maybe they offset the cost of the rent by providing amenities where you would pay additional for food services and the, and the, uh, security and everything else. So I think between all the things that they could provide to, uh, somebody living there, they can kind of offset the cost of the rent, depending upon what amenities you purchase. And probably come up with a number, just somewhere in that seventeen hundred to two thousand dollar a month range. Finding somebody to, to do that might be a challenge, but they're out there. We just need to know who to target and who to, to look for. So, um, I, I think this is very beneficial because it, it focuses, focuses our efforts away from just the Heritage House, but focuses on another need that's out there that the community wants. My experience has been with my grandmother, Minnie, when she moved to Dale Commons. And it was, you had everything that you needed there. There were apartments, there was a large community area, dining where you could all get together, TV rooms. And the, the level of care was dependent upon the individual. So they had nursing staff there that was able to help you. So as you needed more assistance, they could provide that for you. So you could really stay there for, you know, from retirement age and just not wanting to take care of the home. You wanted a, a rental, you wanted some amenities there, and you could come and go as you please. And as you got older or needed more services, you could still stay there and they would provide it for you. But that, that was very expensive. It's a very expensive facility, and it gets more expensive the more amenities that you need or the more assistance that you need. So that, but that sounds like what we're kind of targeting here. Something that can accommodate people for a longer period after age from retirement. Location-wise, what you're describing is the nineteen acres that we have right next to the community center. That's where the expansion of the, the park is supposed to go, but it's nineteen acres. So you could put a facility there that could handle pretty much as many people as you wanted, and they have access without crossing streets, without having any kind of, uh, you know, barriers to getting to the community center and, and any activities that might take place there. So we probably should kind of consider that as a property that we own and money that we have, uh, to be able to assist that type of a project. So, just a thought.
Oh, good idea. My, uh, father-in-law was in the facility in Houston, and it was five thousand dollars a month. And, but he had all that, they took care of him, they fed him, they did his care for him. I mean, but it was five thousand dollars a month. So I don't know who could facilitate something like this. We're going to have to do some research and some of what, uh, Vice Mayor, um, had said about looking at the land out there for the park is a possibility. I don't know how that's going to work out. We can look at it. I understand how important is the proximity to where you guys want to function in terms of your eating and your activities and so forth and so on. It makes sense. I just don't know how that's going to affect overall the park and how its plan is. Something we're going to have to look into. Councilman?
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, to me, now that we've got a role back in the plan, I'd love to go back to, uh, planners, you know, the Anderson, and say, what do you think about this, the feasibility of finding a developer? Does this make it more palatable, less palatable, you know, with this set of circumstances?
Uh, we're going to have to have some sort of incentive because no developer's going to go out there and give you the world.
That's why we have property.
We have property and money, and those are good leverage points that we could use. But we're going to have to...
I'm just going to play devil's advocate, or I'm not really going to play devil's advocate. I'm just going to caution that if you use the parkland, the park impact fund would have to be paid back for whatever portion of the land you use. So there'll still be a cost for that land.
Who owns the property between the church and Arthur Road there? How much land is there, you think? We have seven acres.
So that land...
Land swap type idea. It's across the street, just like Heritage is.
That's true.
Jersey, I don't know what kind of, sorry. How much property we're talking along Arthur Road there that may or may not be available. It could be agreeable, the idea of something like that.
Sure, it's across the street.
But that would be across the street, just like Heritage is. It's close proximity there. Doesn't impact the park. We have seven acres to play with over on St. John's. It might be a, um, a land swap deal possibly that's thrown in there maybe. But I think is they're not, you know, just...
Yeah, well, we got to brainstorm. We got to come up with something. That idea, that almost made on you.
That, and that land that you're referencing, uh, if you go, it's not part of city limits. It's an odd cutout, so. But now that you've mentioned it, we will look at it because we do part of doing that municipal services review.
That might be one of the works we want to work on.
We can definitely look into it and see cleaning it up.
Well, the other option, the other reality is we may not have a property close enough, but we can use a shuttle. I mean, there's, there's other options.
You already got that as well.
And that was on our list to make sure we had true information.
Well, we, those are things we can weigh out. This is good because we're getting a lot of, uh, parameters that we can work around and see what we can do. Uh, is there anyone else that would like to speak on?
I just want to comment on what you missed that, um, the other facilities do not give you an option. When you move in, it includes everything. So maybe the meals are your sliding point. I don't know. So to where you give two meals or you contract with the restaurants in town or something. But I thought your idea of giving people options was, was good because that is not possible in most of the ones. Okay? Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that would like to come up and have some say about? Please come up, come up, uh, please.
I just wanted to know, I did look up Heritage House, it's two point six and an acre.
Two point six, okay, I'm in three acres. Very good, go ahead, thank you.
Hi, I second everything Ann said. Um, we've discussed this before, so I think there's a real need in that column for, um, for seniors. Um, and I just invite the council, I just said that he has his place where his grandmother was. But the rest of the council, um, similar projects I think that we're talking about would be Samaritan Village. And that's in Houston. They have a same-type town we have, and they have an excellent facility there. My former mother-in-law is going to be moving in there next week, and, um, her rent will be three thousand a month. But, um, that will cover absolutely everything, all meals and all the amenities. Um, they have an amazing, um, facility there. And so if nobody, if you've ever been there, just to go and to just see kind of what we're talking about would be a great thing. Also, you talked about O'Connor Woods in Stockton, and a good friend of mine lives there. I visit there each week, and they have a similar facility there. So it starts out as independent housing, um, private cottages. It goes from there to assisted living and then to memory care maybe. But I think that's the kind of thing that, um, we also need. But I think like Ann said, um, people, they have paddock and also Heritage House are independent living for affordable housing. But I think what we need is a step beyond affordable housing and a place where people... affordable housing and a place where people can go where all the meals and everything else, where they can communicate and, um, have camaraderie and have activities, that's the kind of thing.
A true community, yeah. The one in Houston, is that private? Who, who owns the Samaritan?
Uh, it was also partnership, like you talked about. It was the City of Houston who originally had the, gave them the land.
Okay.
To do it, but there is a gentleman from what I did.
Your own?
Yes.
You talked a lot of...
He put a lot of money into it, yes. So, and I know that, you know, just like Bethany Home, there's a partnership, and so I think that we could look into something like that to see who else might help.
So the Samaritan Village, that...
It's right on Fox Road.
It's kind of a campus with hospice house and then...
Yeah, uh-huh. There's twenty acres.
My grandpa Hagan was there, my grandma was there.
Yeah, so that's just a...
Yeah, and we're focused on the hospice, the hospice part of it, but it, that's exactly what, when we start talking about our needs, that you can move in there when you downsize...
Time you go up, yeah, exactly, exactly. This place that she just rented is just amazing. It's wonderful, and all the amenities that she's been having is, you know, I mean, I think that's for seniors alone, and they would rather their home. They want a place that they can call a community, where they have other people their same age that they can do activities with, so I think that's what I do really like.
Is there, is there any kind of subsidy or does, uh, any kind of insurance help offset any of that cost or is...
No, in her case, I mean, she does, she's on a very fixed income, but what she gets through social security, and then she has a home that she's selling. So when she sells that home, all the money that she makes on a sale of that home, which prices right now in the seller's market, so she'll put that in the bank, and she's ninety-two, so the rest of her life, we know that she'll be able to make up the difference between her social security and what she's gonna get from her house. So I think there are a lot of people in that same situation who have homes and they wanna sell their home, but they wanna go somewhere else, and with their fixed incomes less what they get from selling their home, they could force something like that.
Absolutely, yeah. That's a great way to go. Fred Dunlop lives there as well.
Yeah, it's brilliant. So anybody who hasn't visited that, you might just check it out, and very, very, they will give anybody a tour, and I think it would be something that the council could, especially since they're the same-sized towns we are, and we don't have to have two hundred and forty units like they have.
No, no.
But you could do it on, still have that.
I just wondered if that number reflects affordability, though, Peggy. Uh, they may have a number of building units they need to make it all work. I don't know.
I don't know, though.
Maybe staff could look into it. Maybe staff could communicate with, uh, staff at Houston and get some feedback on how they structure that, and we could hear about it. That'd be great. Thank you, Peggy. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak? Come up, please, to podium.
Uh, thank you very much. Just a follow-up on, uh, the Samaritan, uh, Samaritan House. I think, uh, there are, we have a mutual friend that lives there, so I don't know what he pays.
I can ask him.
Yeah, so I think, uh, for some, if, uh, they have a kitchenette, they can cook if they want, Samaritan House, they could have three meals every day. So I, I, I think the, um, range of what we're talking about or what the city should, should consider is like large. Uh, some may recall about two thousand four, five, or six, Mike Nouroussi didn't wanna get involved in that yet, forty something, I'm sorry, he was looking at Escatton, um, forty-seven acres, every amenity imaginable, staff on site, pharmacy, uh, mental issues when you begin to age like myself. So that's right there at Arthur and, uh, Arthur, Arthur one twenty. So Escatton, I believe, is a five-oh-three-C. Now, whether or not they wanna entertain what the citizens and the council could come up with, if it's what they wanna do, maybe very well, but Mayor Alves said they may have to have so many units to make it pencil out.
That was a problem we ran into last time when we had that in a special, they wanted, the owner of the property wanted to have a, a set of the units set aside from everything else, and that's kind of stomach block we ran into. So there's some issues there.
Yeah, so that was, that's a, a property owner. If there are five-oh-three-C, that would be the partnership of a developer or, or an agency to be able to, you know, to, um, to, to make that work. Other than that, you know, if people give about two or three acres, um, again, maybe Escatton or builder would go for that size of development. Anyway, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else out there that'd like to come and speak? Please come up.
Jerry asking, uh, one thought keeps going through my head. You're talking about the size of these projects. Right now, if we have small project needs, like projects, but if we get into a large project, and I'm not saying it's good, bad, or indifferent, but it will change the nature of Escalon from a family-oriented community to a senior-oriented community. So it's just something to keep in mind if you're thinking about the size of these units.
Well, yeah, the balance could be a problem. No, I get that.
What might be looking at more than one project? One is that, with all the services and get another two and a half acres, it sounds like that we could do another balloon rent of Heritage Houses for more folks there in that lower size that we still have that need for.
And that, and that's a good...
So like, I don't think we can, let's not be just make one project out of that.
The concern I have, the concern I have is this, Heritage House has a waiting list of a hundred and forty people already.
Yes.
So what you build is gonna facilitate the hundred and forty people waiting. My question is, how many of those hundred and forty people from Escalon? I know that's a sticky point here, and I know there's no way that because you get financial money from federal and state, you can isolate just as many people, but at the same time, I would, I'm more working with, uh, something that we can control where we have this on people first. So I don't know what that is, and I don't know what we can do, but I think that's my goal.
That's why I'm a developer, though, that's the problem.
Well, we'll find something. I'm gonna look into it and find, try to get some ideas worked up. That's what this meeting's for.
I think that's what Ann is, the project and the scope that Ann is presenting based on the input that she's received from seniors in the community, that does seem like it's, uh, a possibility that you could, you know, maybe not restrict it, but certainly give preference or priority to a local resident.
Well, that was what stimulated me in the whole thing. I mean, I heard from people in town, and I hear it all the time, and your grandmother's one of them, and people like her, just recently, we lost a couple of local people here that had to move out, and that, you know, nice people, I just hated them go. All right, well, do we have some more input? Uh, we've got some good ideas. I think we have a, an outline of what we can work around. Staff's gonna look into the thing in Houston. Meanwhile, we can all go out there and search. If we can find a developer that would be interested, but the problem we're gonna have is he's gonna have those incentives. And like you said, we have some incentives, but like Tammy also mentioned, the park, if we do take parkland, it's gotta be repaid for, which limits our ability to offer much in terms of incentives.
Well, if, if, if we're only talking about three acres out of nineteen, I'm sure it's...
Well...
Well, it depends on, yeah, the size of the facility that you put there.
And we're gonna have to have, uh, infrastructure out there too. I don't know how that's gonna work out either. That's a long ways out there. So as much as I know, the idea was to keep it close proximity to the community center, I think we might be in a situation where we have to show. Go ahead.
I think we need to search for a donor like John Rogers.
Okay, you got one?
Very, very wealthy man.
Yeah.
Well, that probably won't be. I really agree with what Ann presented.
Sure.
And that, I think a lot of us are looking for, uh, the moderate housing. But I also think we should be, look further and expand a place like Heritage House. Expand paddocks better. I mean, there, if a hundred and forty people are waiting for, you know, for an apartment, well, time is ticking by, people, and for some of us, it's really ticking. And I think the city should think about, you know, all parks, all kinds of housing. Um, and I think a lot of us are here, you know, because we own our homes and someday we would like to sell and find, you know, a simpler life. So I just want you to think about that too, and, and expanding in other types of housing for seniors.
Do you think the seniors would be in favor of living in the trailer park?
I think some would, yes.
And what, how would we do that? Would we have it where they bought their own trailers? Or would you think that somebody would have trailers for rent or for sale? How would that work?
Well, how does paddocks work now?
I don't know.
Their, their owner occupies.
There's no rentals, I understand, right?
Yeah, um, so when they have a unit available, um, you buy for sale. Yeah, I mean...
Now, is there room to expand paddock?
I don't think they have any room on their, their current property, no.
The land adjacent to his own paddock, is it not?
Uh, I'm not positive on that.
I think it might be. I think the whole...
Yeah, there's land across the street there. I mean, I think we just gotta have to pursue it, maybe not have, maybe be next to paddocks.
Well, I, I understand what you're saying. I get it.
And like those types of projects.
We should look at, we should look at everything we can, obviously.
Yeah.
To find a way to facilitate the need, I agree. Uh, and trailers, uh, Dick Dawson brought that up today, and I was talking to Dick Dawson about that. He thought that was a good place to go. All right, well, that's, we can put that on our list of things to look into. We got the trailers, we got the thing, Samaritan Housing. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to say, I heard that the Brits just went up to six hundred dollars a month just for the paid paddocks.
I don't know that.
So I don't know that for a fact.
I have friends that live there, and they're not paying that kind of money.
Well, I, I do know that the, uh, they have brought in a management firm.
There you go.
For the, for the park. So I know that there has been some change there, but I don't know for sure, like, what things created.
Sure, sure.
So I just wanted to pull that off for the best question. And I have another question. Has anybody thought about habitat to the manatee or habitat for the manatee? Could they come in and help with something?
The ones that build houses, that are you talking about?
Yeah, they're volunteer...
Like Mr. Jimmy Carter was doing?
Right.
I don't know much about that. We can also look into it. We can look into that.
Yeah, exactly. You know, that's one of the goals, too.
Hey, we should look at everything. I agree totally.
I know, I think, I can sell and stuff.
All right, very good.
I think they typically do like a smaller apartment, like one or two.
Exactly. Uh, Judy, did you wanna say something?
I live out in town. They are privately owned. The owner owns mobile homes. The cheapest, well, the mobile home that's for sale right now is nine thousand dollars. I don't know an older senior who would be able to afford to buy something like that. Even seven hundred dollars, excuse me, six ninety-five a month for rent, like your own utility, it's, it's expensive to live there. It's not as cheap as everybody thinks it is. But...
I'm gonna put a...
But...
Yeah.
I think that the rumor is the park, the damn property sold. That's the rumor in the park. I'll go public with that. That's the rumor that that property has sold. And we're gonna have a newer management company, and we have no idea, we have no amenities anymore, and we have no, no help there. Everybody is on their own, and we have no help. I personally feel we would be better going with something like Heritage than going with something like Paddock.
Yeah.
And I'm tired of having to live there forever. Love their family, they're great people, but there's been a lot of changes in the three years I've been there, and it's not good. That's the point of that.
Okay. So now we got a little more information on that. Um, okay, so what we discussed here, we got a lot of good ideas we need to work on. What we probably do is give it a little bit of time to see what we can come up with and need again, and go over what we found out.
Of course. So I've been watching online, I'm, I'm starting to be late. Um, I think that, uh, when we're talking about how to get a senior project into this community, I think we're, we're missing out on one of the biggest cards that we have to play, um, that is a inhibitor to that, and that's the cost of entry. So if somebody, if we want a developer to come in and build a nice senior housing facility, we want to have good amenities, uh, we wanna bring them into the community. I've heard a few things, and I'll address one, is that Mayor Alves, um, keeps bringing up, which is a good point, about how are we gonna ensure that Escalon residents are gonna have access to these homes? And, uh, the reason I wanna talk about that is, if you're going to, if, if we build something and people buy those homes from out of Escatton, they've now become part of us. That's how a community grows. Escalon didn't always used to be eight thousand people, it used to be one thousand people, it used to be five hundred people, and it grew. And those people get incorporated into the community, and they continue to make this community a nice community. Uh, the thing we have to think about is, like I said, the cost of entry, economies of scale, things that developers look at, how can they make money on a project? Much as we seem to talk about, how can we make it so that the city benefits with the developer, you know, will get as little as possible and we get what we want? I wanna talk about the fees that the city charges for developers to enter into this market. You have multiple fees, you have developer impact fees, connection fees, you have all these things. That's really what, what we can affect up here. We can talk about what we want, if we want transportation, if we wanna be here. We have to talk about the cost of entry. A developer is not gonna come here, and we heard the gentleman earlier about the cost of lumber being three hundred percent higher. That's a inhibitor to building. It costs so much, so if you wanna build, it's gonna cost the customer. We as Escalon, City of Escalon, we're the customer. We want senior housing. We've got to be willing to pay or use our abilities to make concessions and work with the developer. I guarantee you, we could have senior housing in this community within the next five years if we would lower our developer impact fees significantly to a point where a developer would go, that's now attractive to me. And here's what happens, we don't have to worry about what amenities they're gonna have and if it's gonna be good for us or this or that. The developer's job is to build something that is high quality so they can sell it. That's the basics of the economy. I, I, I just feel like we're talking in circles about this, and I feel like this conversation could go on and on and on and on. The cost of entry in this town is too high for developers to wanna build. We have the ability to affect that, and that's what I'm calling for tonight. We need to find a way to reduce developer impact fees such that the developer will be attracted to this community and want to build a quality project.
Uh, Councilman, uh, Crumbridge? What we were discussing earlier was, uh, rentals, not so much to sell them for, uh, people. We were, what the people were asking for was rentals that were affordable, and they came out with some prices, and the prices seemed fairly reasonable. I mean, eight hundred to a thousand dollars for one bedroom is not, that's fair for, of rentals. If it's nothing elaborate, you know, it's not a Taj Mahal, but it's a clean, safe place to live. And then they also mentioned they'd like to have some amenities, like how a meal, daily cleaning area, a community center. But again, this is more like a, a, a community, a senior community, not so much people are gonna be buying these houses. So what we need is a developer or a organization that will build a small community for seniors, and it's not gonna be for sale, it's gonna be for rent, and that's what we were discussing this evening about. We ever, we didn't really get into the fact we're gonna build a bunch of housing for seniors. I think that their point is that they want to rent, not own.
Well, regardless, if you're gonna build something and you're gonna build it as a rental, you need to see a return on your investment. Your ROI has to make sense, whether you're gonna sell them, you know, like if we were to build a house, flip it, you've gotta see a profit. If you're gonna build a development and rent it up, it's gotta make sense. And what I'm saying is, the only thing that we can do up here, we're talking about stuff that we cannot necessarily affect. What we can affect is the cost of entry into this community, and I'm telling you that if we lower that, if we use our abilities and our influence and our authority on the city council to lower the cost of entry to this community, for commercial developers, excuse me, for residential or commercial developers, that's all you have to do. The free market will take care of itself. We're a nice community, we've got a good reputation, uh, we're safe. It's a place that people wanna build. The, the prohibiting factor is the cost of entry, and that's what we can affect. That's what we need to be talking about. We need to be talking about the cost of entry into this community, developer impact fees, connection fees, on and on and on. If we can do something to make it more appealing for a developer, they will see us out. We don't have to be doing a... We don't have to be doing a, I had a meeting with Bethany Home. I sat in a meeting by myself. I went out there to Bethany Home in Ripon and I talked to their entire board. It was me and like fifteen other people and they were all staring at me like I was about to make fire or something. And I was talking to them about, how can we get something like this in Escalon? And that's what we're talking about now. Obviously, nothing came of that and I'm not exactly sure why. But I know that the cost of entry in this town is so high and whether we like it or not, the red tape is prohibited to having a developer build something in this community. We clearly have a need for senior housing. We can make it happen. The way we make it happen, we lower the fees.
This is something that, we can discuss it and, but I will let, tell you this, we're not any higher than anyone else, first of all. Uh, Escalon's fees are not higher than anyone else. It's, they're all high.
I don't know why we have to be like everybody else. Well, I don't-
So the fees are based on what services, like a development will bring. So when you develop those developer impact fees, there's a study that goes in there in what's going to happen? What's gonna be the impact on your police department, on your city hall, on your streets, on your public works, on your parks, all of those impacts, what is that gonna mean to the city? So they establish like what future growth is going to need to mean and what additional costs that's gonna bring on. And that's where those fees are established, just like your connection fees are buying into a system that's already there. If you don't have those fees, then that's gonna be on the backs of all your users or you're gonna have failing infrastructure.
I understand that and I appreciate that. And for a second, when I hear about the impact fees and how they directly relate to somebody's to build a development, what's the, let's take one example. If we build a senior housing development in this town, what's the impact on the police department? And I would say, very minimal. I don't think the seniors are gonna be causing a great deal.
It's not that they're gonna cause a, a great deal, but sometimes seniors are a lot of medical calls or those kinds of calls and the police department doesn't step out on those too.
Sure, I understand that. Okay, so it's a trade-off, right? It's a trade-off. There have been programs, I've looked it up, you can do your own research, where cities, in order to stimulate growth, the right kind of growth, like we're seeking, one thing they did is they did a moratorium on developer fees. They said, no development impact fees for a certain period of time, where they cut the developer impact fees. That is one way to stimulate a project like this, okay? I just want us to consider that, 'cause I don't think we're talking about it enough. The cost of entry.
The City of Modesto did exactly what you just said. They, they offered a short period of time for businesses and I can't remember what type of business they wanted in. Do you remember that, uh, Tammy?
Now I can't recall that.
It was a couple of years ago. City of Modesto wanted, uh, certain type of business in Modesto and then they offered to reduce fees like you're talking about. And I, I'll have to look it up again, but it was a couple of years ago, maybe four or five years ago.
Dominique, can you target, can a city legally target, let's say, a lower developer impact fees for a specific, want in this case, a senior housing facility?
I mean, the council can adjust fees however they agree upon, um, so-
Just, let's say, the right situation.
For senior, for senior housing, yeah. Um, I mean, and we can go out there, tell them what we want, ask them to draw a scenario, the cost estimate, and they come back to us and tell us what needs to happen for them to be able to move forward with the project. And that's kind of what we did with the last project that, that came before us. The eighteen units, much smaller, so they had a larger impact. They also expressed the, the increase in construction costs and that. Mind you, they weren't, they weren't, um, they were market rate and there was less units and stuff. But like they had mentioned, to make this feasible, we need to have these fees reduced or we need to pay the multifamily rate.
But those are for sale units. Again, see, there's another thing about trade-offs.
And you can do the same thing for rent.
Understood, understood, understood. But my point would be that. When that other project was presented, it was a great project, with the exception of I didn't wanna weigh fees for somebody's gonna sell those homes. Now, if they'd been rentals, I'd been more likely to adjust a little bit to that because that would have benefited the community in the long run. But to build the homes is that, those homes are not cheap homes and they're asked for, uh, reduced fees. That's like giving away the taxpayers' money. That was crazy. Alright, we have, Mr. Anderson, you want to say something?
So, so, um, okay, so, so Escalon has something that's unique in their fee structure that a lot of jurisdictions don't have. You've got an in-lu affordable housing fee that's like twenty-one thousand dollars a house. That, you can't find that in a lot of jurisdictions within this locality. So that is very unique to what this city's doing. You have the opportunity to counsel through a development agreement, as a big example, to, to, after you've set a list of primaries or what you would like to see, to negotiate with a developer or a series of developers to do certain things like land dedication, like reduction of certain types of fees that you choose based on that project that's presented. I think what's important is to get a criteria from the community, which you're hearing tonight. This is what they would like to see in this community. So you can build that criteria. And then at some point in the future, make a decision as to what you are gonna offer out of this toolbox of tools to the developer to allow him to make it work economically. The bottom line is, the bottom line is, the developer's gotta make a profit. Whether it's for rental or, of course, for purchase. Um, there's a lot of factors that go into that. There are developers here locally and also in the Bay that deal with these types of projects and are very efficient at it. But again, you know, having a list of what the community's goals, objectives are and then having the opportunity to negotiate for that specific project is something that you certainly have. You have the ability through a tool like a development agreement. And it's individual, it's very specific. And, uh, quite frankly, a lot of the jurisdictions do just that. Stanislaus County is an example. They have what they call an industrial incentive program. Their impact fees for new industrial development are extremely high. One of the big components there is transportation, transportation related improvements. They have a mathematical formula that they can use to reduce, uh, impact fees for new industrial development jobs that's directly related to the number of jobs created, uh, the wage of that job and the investment that companies make in the community. And then they're, anyway, they can determine what that, uh, fee reduction might be. So it's kind of a, kind of a cafeteria plan, so to speak, where you don't have to negotiate on project by project basis. But if you're small enough as a city, yeah, I think you definitely have the opportunity to negotiate with one or multiple builders that are willing to come in and to meet the goals and objectives that you have for senior housing in this community. And that's, that's not uncommon. Um, getting someone, someone like John or, 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 you know, John or June Rogers to come in and make the type of investment they made in Samaritan Village, I, I, I don't know. That's, that was, that was a big deal. John and June Rogers are a big part of the community of Houston and, you know, it's just simply one of many projects that he's invested in. They've invested in the community, so. I suspect you have one or more families here locally that could do something similar and your staff can definitely give you an idea of what that formula was. But again, um, I don't think it's something you should count on. I think there is other options that you have, who again, an instrument like a development agreement, where you can decide if this project is worthy and what your plans give up.
I agree. I have a couple of questions before you get leave there. So with the, um, once we establish the criteria-
Bingo.
How do we attract those builders? Do we target them, bring them in? Do we do another workshop with more builders?
I, I, I think, I think once you've established that criteria, you've empowered, you then have the ability to empower your staff to go out and, and yourself to interview prospective, prospective builders that might be interested in doing something in town.
So when we start talking about-
And that, you know, maybe you want to amplify. That may, that may be something where they invest, the demand is here, but they investigate it and were, and were, um, you know, they shied away from it because maybe their connection charges and, you know, overall fees in total were just too much. I mean, it'd be important, I think, for us to understand if you were to build, um, an affordable housing, affordable senior housing project in town, what would it cost in just fees and connection charges and that kind of thing on a two and a half acre site?
Well, we don't know yet because there's too many unknowns.
No, I, I got that. But generally speaking, if you can duplicate what you have in town, what would it cost just in, just in that?
You could do a perimeter. You could do a mock-up thing, probably.
So, okay, so, so first step is criteria.
Yep.
We were getting the criteria tonight. Second step is put that criteria into some sort of a, a marketable plan. What we're, what we're seeing.
Yes.
Have some idea of what the cost in fees and developer impact costs or what that might look like for a project.
Sure.
Do we need to have an incentive package put together when we reach out to those developers or is that something that we say, we have some options?
I think you, you just simply say you have options.
I agree.
Because you don't, I mean, it's like any, any, any type of negotiation, right? You wanna make sure that people understand what's going on. They know their business model. And they, quite frankly, if they're interested in the community, they'll tell you what they need. And then you guys can negotiate, you know, back and forth.
In, in the construction, uh, trade, Jeff, what normally happens, like if you're gonna bid a job, they'll go out and they'll submit some specs and they'll put it out like in blue book, for example. And contractors who look through that book, they'll see that thing there and they'll say, I'm interested in looking at that. And they'll contact the people. I get them all the time over the internet for different projects and that's generally how they're fed out there. And then as far as like you said, and I agree, I wouldn't tell them what you're willing to give. Let's find out what they need.
So then moving on to the affordable in-lu fees. How? How can those be well, how would you recommend we use those? Do we use those to offset the developer, uh, impact costs and the fees? And say, we got it covered with our, uh, in-lu fees? Or are we using that to, in some other manner, to incentivize the project?
So, so one of the things that you'll have to consider when you reduce, not necessarily defer, because all's going to be paid it, but, but if you, and contemplating and redo, reducing and or giving fee waivers, you've got to backfill that somehow. Because the demand on the services, whether it's water, service or rain, whatever, is, is gonna be the same. It is gonna get impacted. Um, we used to have this tool called redevelopment. We were able to use the RDA tool to do that. We often, we no longer have that tool. So you have to think about that. And, and what most jurisdictions will do is they'll push out that timeframe upon which those facilities would be needed, um, thereby affording the opportunity to, um, have a larger population. Anyway, the map works out, so the reduction can work without having to increase fees anything else. So, yeah, but that's, you're right, that area is right. So you'd have to increase populations to accommodate that, at least under that type of fee scenario. But you'd be working with, I'm not sure who your fee consultant is, ETS or-
Um, we use health and insurance allowance.
They, they have more clues that they'd use in other jurisdictions that can help you through that situation, so.
I guess it's a good option to do. Plus it gives us a, kind of a roadmap for what we need to do on our end to actually go out there and market this, so.
Absolutely. One good question.
I would say one more thing, uh, in response to that. I think that if we do move forward with this, we actually put together a marketing plan and incentive plan, which we've talked about, but we've never done. I think there's a real possibility that in the immediate future, on paper, the city will, it'll, it'll look like the city takes a loss, right? But you have to think long-term. So if we reduce fees and the city doesn't get that impact fee into our funds, so what happens? Okay, so we take a loss right there and there's impact on our services. But what's the long-term effect, right? If we build a nice community or we find a developer build a nice community in this town, it's gonna be there for fifteen, a hundred years, who knows? And long-term, it's gonna pay for itself multiple times over. You're gonna bring great people into this town that want to incorporate and be a part of the community. And so again, I am highly in favor of us creating an incentive package that we can take out or at least something we can take to incentivize the developer.
Okay. Well, is there anyone else there has anything they'd like to say before we wind this down? I think we've gotten quite a bit done. I think we've set some good perimeters. I think we have a roadmap. And what we'll do is we'll try to double back on another meeting and go ahead.
Uh, really good ideas tonight. I enjoyed listening to all of it. And, and especially helped summarize the, by the developer over here. And I think the roadmap is clear. It sounds like there's two or three different avenues that we could go, whether it's high, low income, moderate housing, where the, uh, in-lu fees can be used, uh, and then everything on up. But once you categorize those and, and said, you know, these are the areas we want to explore or we just want to look at this one, then you can make determinations on, on what kind of factories you want to present. There was a project that, that got voted down here several years ago over Mesa. You remember that? There were nine units there. Uh, one of them was gonna be management to gated community. There was problems with the road, you know, parts, setbacks in the way that that area was constructed, you know? That was just one thing. There was a developer there. The other area that I would point out is the church over here off of Escondida. They came to us before they changed the name. I, I don't know, I don't know what the name of it is. Behind it, they've got a lot of property and they were proposing a six-unit, uh, special needs dwelling for, for, I guess their parishioners or anybody else that wanted to use it. They had plans. They were looking for funding. They, maybe somebody that we could reach out to that, uh, we could look into partnering with them. So I just, I don't know if anybody's thought about that, but I just, I like throw that one in.
Well, it's worth looking into.
One more thing.
Sure, go ahead.
One of the roadblocks to the last, um, property that came out of a cousin's old place, that eighteen unit problem there, or property there was the school piece. Even though it was over sixty-two, they weren't gonna budge on the school piece and it was a small amount of money. What kind of, uh, effectively can we do to leverage the district when we're gonna put an absolute senior project into this town?
I wonder if it'll-
Nobody's going to that school. People's gonna go to high schools. They're not gonna do anything. They might go to a local school. That's about it.
Yeah.
I think we need to somehow convince our city schools to not be charging those fees to develop this number of senior projects.
I know, I have a legal right at this.
They were following state law and, um, I looked at that because I was shocked too. But the state law for schools requires projects to be over thirty-five units where they have to pay the fee. And then I believe after thirty-five, they drop it to where you pay a commercial rate instead of a single family rate. So they were having to pay the single family rate on less than thirty-five units. And the school this year, from what we've heard, has recently raised their fees up to five dollars per square foot. So it was gonna be, you know, a significant amount of-
Even for seniors, even for senior housing.
Because, because that's, that's what's written on the books for state law.
So there's no way the room at all-
They can't, they can't replace that.
We need to legally that out. That's crazy.
The housing project.
I can't believe it.
Obviously, it's a private company with thirty-five.
Yeah, so we don't have to worry about fully loaded rates. They'll, they'll, they'll be a commercial or, or institutional rate, whatever, however they set up their-
Zero impact in our school, doesn't it?
It is. Thank, thank you, California.
And it's going to be significantly minimal than-
Well, I just-
I would agree with senior housing, they should have-
It wouldn't, it wouldn't hurt us to talk to our local representatives in the state level and see if they have any sympathy for this situation.
I don't know. Maybe it do, it make any sense.
No, it doesn't. I agree with you. It's horrible. Alright. Anything else? Is that good? Uh, Councilman Bellard? Okay. Any other councilmembers have something to say before we wind this down? You guys did a great job. I apologize for being late. I got caught with a train in Riverbank, so I was held captive. Um, ladies, before everyone leaves here, let's try to set another time to meet, to follow up on this so we don't let it slide and we get some more feedback by then. We'll have some information that will be gathered and then we can chew on that for a while, see if we can finally come to a point where we can move forward. Uh, staff, what do you think? You guys think about another meeting and when?
I think we might something that we can present like a rough criteria as well.
Well, what I'd like to do is go, I'd like them to talk to Houston, Houston, Eusum? Houston and, uh, also do some, look at around about what are options we may or may not have. We've talked about some things this evening. Maybe they can look into and get back to us. I mean, maybe in about what, three weeks?
Well, I would suggest four weeks because that's an off Monday.
Okay, four weeks it is. April twenty-sixth it is. We have April twenty-sixth on your calendar for our next meeting and hopefully we'll have some feedback in the meantime. Uh, anyone out there that can find some information to help us, we'd appreciate it. And, uh, any idea is a good idea. We can look at them all. So don't worry about whether we think it's silly or not. We wanna look at everything. Because we, you know, I think we're gonna have to. Alright, is there any more questions before I shut it down? Go ahead.
Yes.
Yes, it will be. And I'll try to be on time this time. So will Peter. We'll both show up on time. Okay, thank you, everybody. See you at the next meeting.